You hear?
It's picking it up.
It's picking it up now.
Text now.
La, 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 la.
I should say, yes, Scott, single.
You hear us? Can you hear us now? The computer can hear us. I'm just making.
I can hear now. I don't know who.
Thank you.
Everybody on board? Okay. Let's move on to Scott and your presentation of what's occurred in the last couple of months.
Okay, well, let's see, in the last couple of months, we appeared before you for a ERC review. And received some comments then, we were then directed to pursue a zoning variance for creek setback, because we are thirty five feet from the creek bottom bank, whereas we should be a hundred feet, and we were able to mean that variance last week. In the course of the variance application, we agreed to modify landscaping plan slightly in terms of retaining some trees along the bank that were proposed to be eliminated, but the stuff's left in place to keep the bank stable. The neighbor to the south, Sarah, and the hooker was concerned about what we're doing and we met with her actually prior to the zoning board meeting, and then during the zoning board meeting, we spoke with her and the board about not taking those trees down along the bank and preserving, I believe, this additional four like, like walnut trees along the creek bank there. So that was kind of the back and forth that went on. There are other aspects to the landscaping plan that Andrew's better versed at than myself, but it is a substantial landscaping plan. We provided you with a scenic view client statement, which is very similar to the shoreline statement that was provided on the landscaping plan. Essentially, the project is a single family home on a one point eight acre piece of property that has not been developed by Canada Day World Lake to this point, which is somewhat unusual. It complies with your scenic view regulations in the sense that the property is greater in size than one acre, one point eight, and it meets the permitted use, which is a single family home as specified in the regs. We, we have taken into consideration comments from Kevin Albany, the watershed manager, with respect to an overflow that occurred about fifteen years ago in terms of citing the house and providing ratings that protects the house and actually protects the neighbors to the east from, by deflecting the flows onto the vacant lot to the north. And I guess if and if we, if you could show the latest drawing that we submitted today, which is an overall aerial showing the neighborhood, I think it would be really helpful to the board to see that.
Yes.
It is that one. Yeah.
Site plan overlay on the aerial neighborhood photo right there. Yeah. So I think this drawing really shows, well, from the location, it's on those reels, on companies. Big town, the photographs, you know, what you see. Um. Elevation included. Yeah. So what we did is we took our drawings you see in monochrome, and we basically brought it into this drawing. We wanted to show you how it fits. This drawing shows a lot, to me anyway. It shows a lot of existing tree coverage around us, yes. In response to negative remarks that we got concerning tree removal. And my response is in a way that that's kind of inevitable in these situations. We have a waste water dispersal area, leach field over here that we're obligated to install, that is a hundred feet from the creek, as per the state health department rights. We have the whole site here, which is setback into the wooded area. The real new shed is largely coming through here and here from the lake, and there's ample vegetation there, tree vegetation to buffer the house. The house is elevated to a safe elevation with respect to any floodwaters that may jump the creek at that point. This area over here, we reserve for stormwater treatment, because we received a comment from Lance saying that it were over twenty thousand per feet, I believe, the disturbance that we needed to provide that level of treatment. So all those items, including the driveway and the associated utilities are necessary in order to develop this property in a in a way that's commensurate, I would say, with the surrounding neighborhood and surrounding houses and the style of the houses and the size of the houses for that matter. We're not trying to take out any more trees than we have to. In fact, according to Andrew, we're adding thirty eight foot trees. And he checked in with Kevin Albany on the types of trees and various amenities that Kevin would recommend, and integrated those into the landscape plan.
Chuck, this drawing, our picture also shows the buffer for the version of the creek should overflow. Did you know that out?
Yes. I didn't show the floor, also, because it's normally shown a grain time, but once upon a time, fifteen years ago, the creek was jumped, jumped overflow here. And we are preserving that roof, actually, the original roof was above here. We're preserving that roof here. If we were to do that again, and we don't know the exact circumstances that caused that, it was expected maybe due to debris buildup, logs buildup. I don't believe it occurred in the winter, so I don't think I can say if you're related to ice flow up. Based on the four years that's on. For traditional drainage, there's just a cover that goes under the driveway, that was a small cover, it's an either sand or cover. This, this overflow was to occur again, it would simply overflow the driveway.
Wouldn't go under, under the driveway.
Not much of it would.
Okay.
It's a big flow, it would just press right over the driveway and onto this currently vacant area. And that's kind of what the zoning board was asking us to do with our grading to protect these homes here. The only caveat to it, I think, is that this is all based on the assumption that that were to happen again. Potential. But there are other opportunities for the creek to jump its bank as you go further down towards the lake. So I guess in terms of housekeeping for our property, we're doing as you were asked to do. And then try and make everything work properly and maintain reasonable amount of clearing and decent landscape. But essentially, that's, that was that was what we did in our course of review with the zoning board appeals.
Yeah, that was a big issue with them. I just want to share that this board is aware of their concern and have intended to.
Um. So I've shown you the visual, I've shown you the, the clearing is really going to be essentially around the areas in white that we've got to disturb in order to achieve the grading and to bring the utilities in. Um. Jim, maybe you can speak to the house and the style and any particulars on that, if you would like him to contribute to this presentation.
Again, while you have this picture up there.
Sure.
To the south of the set base system. I think you showed the plans of the your stockpile.
Yes.
South soil?
Yes.
Would any trees have to be removed to create that stockpile?
We, we would propose, so I, I know that the there was a comment to that effect, we, we were just showing a temporary soil stockpiles, and that was a location that just seemed convenient, but we don't have to necessarily obey that geometry, we can adjust the size and shape of the soil pile to not have to take down trees. We're not interested in taking down any more trees than we have to. We also have other areas that we could stockpile. I mean, the owner's control, for example, this parcel. So this parcel, so we could stockpile, for example, over there if we needed to.
That brings up a point of mine, what the LLC owns that property to the, to the, to the lower, the lower, that one right there, right? Which includes those trees.
Yes.
To our you know, positive side, those trees won't touch, sorry, for any time. So those trees are going to stay there, even though they own all that.
Yes.
They could at any time.
Yes.
But that would actually be the buffer that we would be talking about now for our shoreline guidelines helping that buffer.
Yes.
And okay, so that's an understanding that those would stay.
Yes, the owner has no intent in doing that. In fact, the the zoning board, they indicated that one of the reasons they wanted to build over here to keep the trees for solution was, I remember, branchels and tend to congregate over in this area over here, and this allows them to step, step away and achieve some quiet solution. So I, I don't think they intend to remove more trees than that.
I understand that all the trees that were tagged out there in orange would come down?
Not all of them. We, we did a tree, we did a tree removal plan. That was really our inventory. Because there are a number of black walnuts out there, which I understand to be a vergery.
Yeah.
That you really don't want, no long term, for say quasi suburban recreation use. So we wanted to know what we had. So I, I had my person locate the, the trees of value, as we call them, and then there's other scrub trees that will remain, but we just didn't bother to report those.
That is a heavily wooded lot.
That is.
And try to go in there and try and determine if the trees are covered with white stuff. A lot of it has vines growing, ivy growing up, trees, poison ivy.
Yes.
There's a lot of invasive.
Yes.
A lot of invasive trees. I guess especially black walnuts and hedges.
We did our work in November, when vegetation was all done.
You actually.
See, you're absolutely right. Trying to get in there, it's, it's, it isn't jungle.
Yeah.
And yes, there are a lot of invasives. So if my landscape architect were here, he would say that we're cleaning up all those invasives and we're going to make it extremely nice.
The revised landscape plan.
Mm-hmm.
That you submitted based on the ZBA's request. Is that?
We haven't submitted that. The only change, the only change on that plan from what you currently have would be the the trees along the creek that are going to be not cut down.
I think there were six black walnuts.
Maybe it was six.
Yeah, six, and I think five would have remained, and one had come down.
That's right. That sounds right.
The one that's to the west.
One is coming down.
That sounds like there was one that was down.
Yeah, I know, obviously, trees were the big issue of the ECD, was very concerned about it. It was a long discussion, obviously, with the ZBA. I know this board has concerns. I think we want to try to conserve as many as possible, but we do know the limitations in terms of condition and species and different things can affect the viability of the tree remaining. And sustainability of that bank. Well, yeah, the, the, the bank, yeah, the bank. Bank did look better. Did you want to?
Yeah.
More concerned about the shallowness of the bed, the stream bed, it's very shallow, it's obviously pretty rocky. Um. And I guess rocks get moved every time there's a heavy rain, it gets carried down from above and over the waterfall and down under the road. But it appeared the banks were pretty stable, and obviously we don't recommend you touch them. You don't want to touch them, so.
No, we're all in the same direction there. No, we don't, we don't want to do that. You know, I would just submit, when you take a look at all the constraints that we have to deal with, the site plans on Canada Day World or anywhere for that matter, I mean, by the time you put all the amenities in that you have to put in, each field, stormwater treatment, proper grading, utilities, they're, they're going to affect some trees. And, and I think we're all on the same page in terms of wanting to preserve as many trees as possible, though. The architect, Jim Vane, is called this House in the Woods, and so we are trying to preserve the woods.
I also didn't see it on your plan, but they're so small on my computer. The driveway's also quiet.
Yes, whatever your standard is.
Okay, well, yeah. And your downspouts are going to hit flash or go down to one interior area where Lance was talking about?
We're, we're going to tie them all in, and I think that's shown on the site plan. We're going to tie them all in and then put them into a treatment area here as we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Another concern of the ZBA and was made a condition of your of your order, semi board order, was that the language be placed in the plan, I think Lance, you brought this up on your review also, that the, the owner shall acknowledge on the plan that the proposed home is located adjacent to a creek, a special flood hazard area and delta of a stream, that the property has historically been inundated with ice and water from both the lake and the stream. The owner is aware of the historical flooding and associated possibility of damage and holds harmless to town. And the engineer, I assume that language was from like Chris or?
That's how language was from Chris.
Came from them.
Well, Chris Nadler or Chris, I think Chris Jensen, yeah.
Yep. But that's, that's standard.
Well, I know when the, the pitchner, you know, we, we use language like that or similar, so certainly that would be placed on the plan. Is that? It's a Chris Nadler question. That's something that would be in the deed itself as a it's not a comment, it's for the prescription. Was it just?
I think if it's on the plans, at least that would carry over, you know, from, from applicant, from property owner.
I don't think we put it in deeds before. I think we just felt it was on the plan, at least there's a record.
Yeah.
It's on the record plan to get signed.
I believe we've had maybe three of them over the years, and I believe all of them have been notes that I can recall. Whether we've carried it further than that, I don't know.
Carrying it seems to be, it is not a bad idea.
Well, maybe we can make it a condition to check that our attorney, yes. Does the board agree with? And note to that effect.
That's your reviewer. I didn't see it.
Essentially, is confirming what the ZBA had.
So Chuck, I'm generally fine. I mean, that's, that's a that's a CYA for the town, of course, making sure that we don't have to take responsibility for something that happens later, but there's still the impact of the proximity to the stream if something like that does happen. So if that continues to happen and that for this contamination or something else that impacts the lake, then despite the fact that we don't have a problem that we have to pay to solve their water issue, we still have had an impact on the environmental. I would be more concerned with the riparian buffer, the stream setback. And I understand that that was a variance that was approved by the ZBA, but it's still, I mean, that's, that's ECD had significant concerns about that, not just from the flooding but from the environment, I don't ask by that. And when I look at this, I understand it's a, it's a beautiful parcel, and I think what the, the design would fit in, but we can't mitigate the environmental effects, and we continue to make exception around that creek. And I I, I think that's something that I do have concern about. I have a question that I would have, is as we look at, since the properties are co-located and co-owned, is there a way to do some type of agreement that allows that home to shift north? In this case, closer to the other one? And moving away from the creek bed? Can we achieve that setback? Make sure that we get the riparian buffer in place?
That was asked of the applicant at the last CYA meeting.
Right.
And they chose not to do that.
And we did confer with Kevin Albany and, and the difficulty that happens if you were to consider moving the house further to the north, is that you then increase the gap between the house and the creek. Over here, the zoning board felt it was important for us to protect these homes here. And so water should happen to do that again. This deflected the river this way, but if they push the house further to the north, then we open up this here, and we don't really have the ability to offer the same level of protection. So that was another item that the board asked me to review with Kevin Albany, as I did, and he replied back to them via email. So I don't have an email. He replied that in a positive.
Again, I think there's two things. There's flooding, and then there's environmental impact that happens on the creek.
So can I chime in? I, I'm on the video here, but I don't know. Hi, everybody. I look so small from here. I'm Betsy Bragg. I'm the attorney on the team here. So as Scott said, we've, I don't believe we actually have any, we, we have no adverse environmental impact, and everything has been done to avoid and minimize any impact. We have the variance, and so we should not even be having a conversation about pushing the house.
Oh, how do, how have you defined that there's no adverse environmental impact?
Well, we had a review. We've had a review. We've done everything we can to avoid, minimize, and mitigate, which is what we, you know, our approach has been. I don't, I haven't heard anybody identify what any adverse impact is. We aren't producing any negative impact that's been identified.
I mean, when I look at the notes from the Environmental Conservation Board, there are an entire series of comments about disapproval related to the setback. Did I understand that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
So the Environmental Conservation Board did indicate that they do not recommend the variance.
Right.
Which is why we worked hard.
They do not have those comments.
Which is why we worked hard.
I would like an opportunity to review those.
Betsy, those are the minutes from the Environmental Conservation Board.
June, June second.
Yep. Those have been on our website.
You know what? I think that I talked to Scott about that, but I don't think I've actually seen anything.
There's five pages. I mean, their review was substantial.
We had an Environmental Conservation Board member, I believe, present at the zoning board of appeals meeting, and they mentioned a couple of items. Actually, it was, they mentioned items over here by the, by the leach field. I think there were one or two other questions, but I was under the impression that we had answered the questions.
So just.
Yeah, that was my, that was, that's, honestly, that's what I thought as well, that we had satisfied any of their concerns.
There's been ECB?
Yes.
Just, just for the sake that we're all talking about the ECB, one of the, one of the recommendations that's identified was the ECB strongly recommends adherence to the hundred-foot setback from the stream and endorses the denial of the stream setback variance. The ECB agrees that the benefits of granting the setback grants will not exceed the detriment to the ecology of the area, lake health, and potential flooding impact to the neighboring and downstream properties. The ECB suggests reconsidering the plans so that the house is resized or repositioned entirely outside of the Hunford setback. Obviously, these were in preparation of comments geared towards the ZBA and were part of the ZBA's file and review associated with the variance, but I I think the planning board is just having a dialogue about some of their review, which does include the site plan components of the project, which is part of your proof.
Yeah, I, I think based on the decision of the ZBA, it's on us now to try to work to make sure we have the best plan available as far as the site plan to make sure that the concerns that have been brought up are addressed. To make sure that concerns that have been brought up are addressed.
With respect to those comments, as we got into the zoning board, we were. The long and short of it was largely to check in with Kevin O'Leary. Because he has quite a bit of experience in this regard over the entire watershed. More global view, I suppose you could say, and so we we took that cue and we. We pursued working with Kevin to come up with a design and justify what what we see on the plan, so it wasn't that we. Ignored those items, it's that we we sought resolution of those items and this is the result of that.
I will say also, or that Kevin O'Leary did respond July eleven. And I think to your point, a lot of his comments were geared towards the drainage and he did. He did identify that he felt you have designed the plan in accordance with what you and him, I guess, met at site and discussed.
And and Sean was present as well.
There is a question and a recommendation that the D E C review the plans, is that I don't see any notes related to that. The last bullet point from the E C B suggested that the D E C review the plans.
I don't know any reason why the D E C would review the plans, what the survey would be for them.
Um, it says that the E C B wants to remind the other reviewers that this is a trout spawning stream. Shading in the stream bed by the tree can appear as critical as trout are temperature dependent to this, no trees on the stream back. Bank as well as any trees providing shade to the streams to be removed. The E C B also suggests referring this application to the D E C for review.
So the town is part of the P R C being that there was no real, like typically what would happen is if there was um. An approval or permit needed or correspondence from agencies needed, the town would identify them and forward them out. Just for the record, for this particular project, D C was not identified, however, the watershed was. And sometimes the watershed would also make a similar recommendation, I don't know if they did. Um, but obviously from the time that E C B got the comments to the town, I don't know that it was referred to D E C at that point in time.
I think it's been a hardscape approach.
If there is a disturbance to the stream.
Dug it out or affected the banks or tried to stabilize the banks or something.
I don't think we rule on D E C on that other property below. There was not much discussion on that.
Again, because I don't think it was.
I mean, the ride was right there next to the creek. Houses around. I don't remember.
What specific environmental?
Well, any anytime you are. I mean, we have setbacks. One of the reasons for a setback is the flooding aspect and they try to adjust that. Another end in issue with the setbacks is making sure that that water system, that environmental system that adjacent to the creek isn't disturbed. So and that's why they suggest setbacks as well, there's the underground aspects of it, there's everything that happens on the surface. So that's a part of the environmental intent of having setbacks tied to the stream. And I don't consider myself an environmental impact, but I think that many of those rules are set for. Aspects like that and trying to address that. And I think too often we we get into a bit of a motion towards who's responsible if the house floods, does the town hold the liability to it? For example, so we look at those quickly, but I don't think we often take into consideration the impacts that it could have on. Especially in this case, the adjacent lake. Uh, because that flows directly into that, so that's my concern is that we're we're violating. People that are smarter than me at least and topics, we're allowing the determination to go beyond what we've.
I don't think it was a violation where. Where, you know, we're contrary to what the hundred foot setback is, but that went through a procedure. The Z B A, they haven't reduced what it was covered before us. So I guess since they went through that procedure, they took the proper steps to. Now, I know it was too hairy to have on the Z B A, right? I I listened in on and it went on for a long time and it was discussed very thoroughly, I I thought all aspects were brought up. Uh, Ms. Hooker got up and made her concerns very well presented and. And I think the applicant had tried to address it, addressed most of the concerns that she had. I know she was concerned about trees being removed, that that's the last lot that has on the lake that has trees. Well, okay, if you said. But people are entitled to develop their land and some, in some cases, in many cases, the trees have have to be taken down to to build the structure. I, yeah, again, I'm just thinking from a standpoint, we've got to make sure that. Uh, the site plan as shown meets the conditions of the Z B A. It meets the conditions of anything that we want to impose regarding stormwater, I mean, we. And and again, getting back, I guess I'll start off with me reading that. Uh, that they were caveat to be placed in the plan. I think Chris Jensen, one of the reasons he wanted to do that was sort of self motivated because. I guess a lot of times people come in after water comes up on their property and said. Boy, I I never thought I'd get this one, you know, we're, how could you guys approve a plan of that garden, we just want to make sure. That current and future property owners are aware of the possibilities that are thrown on. And that's a procedure we started, you know, maybe five, six, seven years ago.
It's, I think the main just behind it as well is that it's a well documented flooding area regardless of the proposed application before you. It's been flooding, it has been, it will continue to flood and that. At the time when they submit an application, they're recognizing that they are in a flood zone, but then somehow between. That review and then getting a permit and building a house, they tend to forget during that, so I think Chris was just trying to find a mechanism. That might be able to be placed on a plan to kind of help them remember where they are located.
I think that was also a byproduct of. The Riser Roberts project over here that I worked on some years ago when it first started out and and all this information really came out of that. Which is why I was aware of it when when I was contacted by these owners and. And these owners were present, the owners were present at the zoning board meeting. Last week, they they did acknowledge just exactly what you're saying, so this is, this is understood by them. Um, and and Betsy and the town attorney, um, I believe as a result of that meeting are going to draft up whatever that language is. It needs to be added either to the plans or wherever it needs to be added and. As far as that meeting, when I think everybody was on board with that, but in talking with Chris. Uh, who I guess is the floodplain manager for the town of Canada Day. Um, he indicated that that's his best practice, as I understand.
And and, you know, I I'm gonna recommend probably maybe take it one step further in that area where the. Uh, buffer, the overflow would be that did be a documented easement created. Uh, along that route. Uh, so that it would not be changed by. presume that make sure that overflow root remains there that. You you don't wind up with a pickleball or something. And and blocking it off and taking away the effectiveness of what it is, so. If you make sense of.
Show the um, the landscaping plan, landscape architect show. A particular planting area and that might coincide with exactly what you're talking about. Um, I think landscaping plan was she. Or four, maybe. Yep. So. He developed this area and here. And he's calling for specific plantings relative to that condition, so. In regarding that comment and that actually comes over here too. So it sort of goes like this, or the way he is, you know, but um, if if there were some sort of um. Restriction or something.
It is overflow.
We could call it. Yeah.
Anyway, we we come up. But I think.
Or we're obligated to comply with an, I mean, if there's an approved site plan, it's binding.
Yeah, but here's the problem when when the shotlins come in and want to put the pickleball or a shed or whatever. We go, we go to the flat um, that's recorded and then we'll see that easement and it could get lost, we don't always pull the site plan. Um, it's that, it's that sort of, I mean, if it's a recorded easement, we will see it.
Maybe easement. I think we could come up with something that'd be comfortable, what do you think, Betsy?
Um, I'd have to talk to the town attorney about it and see what his thoughts are. Obviously, the people, the entire neighborhood on Men Teeth Drive was supportive. Um, these are the people most directly, you know, um, you know, potentially, they're the people that are right there. Um, and the shotlins, um, there's no plan for the adjacent parcel right now, but I'm not sure what the, you know, sometime in the future, what that would hold. Um, so as long as the shotlins, uh. I guess I'd have to, I'd have to think it through, you know, see how that would work, because there's no, obviously, they're good, what they're building and what we're proposing as a site plan is what they intend to do. Um, they certainly are, um, you know, have the most at stake at protecting this property. Um, but I'm always a little hesitant to commit to, um. Easements in terms of being like a a property right encumbrance as opposed to a land use type of an encumbrance. You know, I I prefer something that you come back to the planning board for and not something that's a. Um, you know, like a an interest in real property.
So it would just be a site plan approval then on if it was within that area, it would come back to the planning board.
Right, I think that, you know, putting, making sure that this is something that would come back to the planning board as opposed to being something that has to be, you know, some kind of. Like I said, I'd have to talk to the town attorney about it, because I just wouldn't want something that requires. Um, any type of legislative action to release some property right in the future or something like that, I just wouldn't want to have to deal with that.
It would have to be something that held up to a whole new board that didn't understand what was going on at the time. Or a new applicant that may buy that house, so something in the future that holds up on why that is that area.
Yeah, and we can delineate that, I mean, it sounds like that's.
I'm sure we could work something out.
Yeah, it's just a perpetual or.
I I understand what your goal is, I just want to make sure not to do something that. Um, you know, people come and go over the years and I just want to have a situation where they have some kind of an encumbrance that becomes a title problem in the future.
Okay.
But I think, I think it's, I think it's a good comment because. If if this were a property where to change hands and if someone were to occupy it. Some years down the line, I don't, I don't see that happening, but under that scenario, they might not know that that's not an area which should be built.
That's my point.
Absolutely.
Uh, or anything else from you guys to sit with their mind notes?
No, just to confirm, all those overhead power lines are gonna go in the ground, there's like.
That was kind of one of the first things we looked at was how to get those out of there and so we actually submitted. Our request to R G N E almost a year ago and. And the application fees kind of significant.
As you can imagine.
But, but it certainly makes the site, you know, much more usable and. You know, aesthetically pleasing, I would say.
So you, would you do it just on that site or be taken through to the other?
The proposal right now. Over basically of getting rid of everything, all the poles and wires in here. And going to follow the path somewhat along here. I think we'll go aerial, back to aerial amount right there. Um, so I I think. I think the owners did speak with the neighbors as to whether they wanted to do anything and I don't know that we've gotten a reply. Um, I suppose it's possible that it would happen in the future, but it should make it much nicer. And I suppose that gives us plus in our scenic view. Issue, I think I could say we're taking down wires and improving the site that way, so I neglected to put that into my statement.
So your view from the lake is sort of right to left. Uh, I guess the prime part of the residence will be visible through that gap would be that northeast corner.
There's a little opening here where there's a parking area that you can probably get a glance of the. House, can we possibly put up the other, um, there's a couple of trees.
Yeah, I was gonna say, certainly got to overlay distant trees with those trees there to get the toe.
Uh, the previous one, the aerial that we had shown originally. Uh, the one that is. So there's a little parking area here.
Yep.
Yeah, um, so I guess there's potential visibility. Blocking structure there, structure there, so that would be really the only area that we.
There's a couple of small trees in that field area too. Right in that lane.
There.
Down, up a little higher, right here left a little bit in that area. Down further actually, but in that ground, there's a couple of small. Like young. I think we'd agree.
I think you'd have to strain yourself a little bit to see it.
Even though now we're looking at the structure, uh, it's Jim, he's online, uh, did we see elevation drawings of the?
Yes, Jim did an elevation drawing, I think it's part of our collection. Would you like to call that up?
Sure, if you could bring that up, just.
Sure.
Uh, is it those? Yeah, burn rates was February.
There you go.
Yeah, two months.
This one?
Uh, that elevator house render. honorary would be the elevation. So this is the. West, not Lakeside.
Not Lakeside.
No, like, no, that's the driveway, right?
Other views.
Kind of vignette that you're looking at right now starts, that's an alternate front that we are not going with, we're going with the first elevation on the west side.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and this kind of works in a a clockwise manner as as you scroll through the elevations. Um, as you scroll through, you're now looking kind of from the northwest into that parking court. Um, and then the master bedroom is on the end of the house and then working around to the east elevation. Um, just adding to, and I'm I'm listening to the comments, I haven't been butting in because Betsy and Scott are doing a great job summarizing where everything is, but. The house, one of the, we, the house positioning was done for several reasons and one of which. Was to take advantage of that natural clearing where the parking spot is, as you come around Men Teeth to the other properties. There's a very defined opening in the in the tree line. And we purposely put the house in this location to take advantage of that so that. Uh, Peter and Susan could get views of the lake kind of in a northeasterly direction without having. To remove any more trees and would be necessary to make sure that the structure was safe, so. We are absolutely a plan to take advantage of that view.
But it's reciprocal.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and I think just a a couple of things that may not, that must maybe adding on to comments that were made is. You know, Scott is is followed a. Procedure in raising the first floor of this house. Higher than I would have normally thought it would be, I mean, in the Lake District, we have elevation six ninety four stuck in our heads from. Uh, that two feet above the flood elevation is where we like to be with our first floors, well, we're up at six ninety seven here. And that is to provide this structure with that added. Level of safety in the event of an overflow of Men Teeth Creek. Um, so hats off to Scott and Kevin to point that out. Um, you know, and so this house will be very safe in the event of of any. Overflow from the creek because we've set that elevation high. So the position of this house from an environmental standpoint. It's pulled away from Men Teeth because if you look at Men Teeth in the vicinity of the house, the elevation is around six ninety two. Well, our first floor has to be at six ninety seven to protect the house. If we push this thing closer to Men Teeth. If we push this thing closer to Mentheith, we not only would lose any veiling of trees between the, the roadway to the other properties. Um, but we would also have a house that would be looming on the road with a first floor that would be as much as five feet higher than the road itself. So I'm not quite sure how we could even grade around this house um, and maintain our height requirements of twenty-five feet above average grade around the house. Um, so I mean, pushing this thing towards Mentheith would open up just a considerable number more issues that we would hurdles we'd have to overcome with this. Not only, you know, on top of the fact that it would be looming on the road and it would also interfere with the natural overflow of the creek. So that we honored that flow path that, that Scott and Kevin had found and it's really a natural flow. When you look at the, the site with nothing on it, that is the natural flow, uh, for the creek to, to go over towards the shotland property. So environmentally, I think we've, we've looked at all the environmental issues. I think we're a comfortable distance away from the creek. Um, if we had to go to a hundred feet, now that introduces all these other development issues that I think would, would be, uh, more infringing on the neighborhood as a whole than what we have done here and, and we're staying away from the creek itself. So I don't think we're gonna have any effect on the creek. So anyway, that's kind of a, my add-on to what Brett, Betsy and Scott had been saying that there's been a lot of thought to how this house is positioned. We didn't just grab a spot and throw it on there.
Jim, is that the stucco, uh, the fascia?
Yeah, so the materials are gonna be, they're actually gonna use a, uh, a, a real stucco finish exterior. Uh, Doug fir timbering where you see all the dark materials out that will be actual Doug fir timbers. The roof will be a, um, cedar shake roof, um, which would is really, uh, very, um, characteristic of these French country style homes. Um, roof pitches are moderate, modest, front to back eight twelve pitches to keep us underneath your, your height limitations, but we've used steep side pitches of twelve and fourteen, twelve pitches to give it more of that French country feel. Uh, there is some stone on the house also, and that will be a real quarried stone, thin cut quarried stone. Uh, what else can I tell you about the house? That's probably not the key issue here.
Looks nice. Uh, we're just a little concerned sometimes with the later color uh, facade, but the, I don't know, we can regulate the color of the buildings, but, uh, in the interest of trying to comply with the shoreline guidelines, uh, if someone comes in with a, a bright white uh, facade, then we usually try to encourage them to tone it down and I don't know how the board feels, but feel the, uh, arable.
Yeah. Like the woods.
These colors are very, uh, real as far as we went through a, a color selection with the shotlands. So this is the color scheme that they will be using, far from a bright white. Um, it's a, this is a cream color with, uh, kind of a brownish hue to it. So, um, definitely not a bright white. The, the faces and rakes will be a darker color as it's shown. Uh, windows will be dark. And we'll have stained entry doors and tim, timber elements, uh, dug for timber elements around the home. So I, I think it, it fits well in the environment. I don't think it's a stark color. I know, I know what you're saying and, um, um, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think this will be a soft kind of a feel and will fit into that, uh, woods environment well.
Okay, uh, anything else on the building itself? Uh, any other issues, uh? Did you check the foot plane FEMA foot plane limits on showing the plan and?
Yeah.
They are.
So the, the, they note that on the plans, the high, you mean high water elevation.
Yeah, I see them showing, make sure they're in the right rotation.
Yep. I think one of your questions was the driveway as well.
Yeah, that, well, yeah. Uh, the length of the driveway is, is that a fire issue at all?
No, it, it complies from the distance of anything over five hundred feet. Fire code says that we should be looking at providing a turnover, a turnaround or turnout as we now know. Uh, so the distance, I believe from the intersection of Mentheith to the next driveway is less, is less than five hundred feet. So technically they have the ability for a vehicle to pull off to allow another emergency vehicle to access it. So I think it complies in that regard.
So the twelve foot width is adequate?
Twelve foot width is a requirement for driveways in kind of Canada.
I'm thinking as far as fire.
When it's a designated road.
Well, how many, how many homes this serves, how many lots, that driveway Mentheith?
The existing private drive?
Yeah. Almost one. Two, three.
And actually, that was a question that I asked Chris Jensen at the beginning of the project, you know, what we were subject to with respect to this particular topic and any other topics related to private drives, private roads and town can table. And this determination that he told me at that time is this was a grandfather condition. That's what it says.
I will say that Chris did provide comments and none of which identify concerns regarding fire codes or fire apparatus. Now, based on our review, terminology being that it's a driveway, um, for being that it's twelve foot wide meets the top requirements. It does have the ability for a turnaround to be provided. It isn't necessarily a dead end per se, as there is multiple ways for a vehicle to maneuver around. I believe it's compliant in that regards.
And is this lot, uh, part of the acubus of properties that use in using that Mentheith drive, uh, or they all have rights, legal rights to, to use it and is it documented in some sort of deal?
I think we've chatted about this at our ERC meeting and I, I think you brought up that issue when I, I checked that out with the attorney and I have copies of the needs to show you what to see.
I, I think maybe just a reference on the plan.
Sure.
Uh, in terms of the, uh, the word leader and.
Librarian page, sure.
Librarian page, I think it meets events. Leaps and bounds.
Yeah, we, we still certainly show that on the, um, on our plan.
Yeah, I think it should be referenced that, uh, the lot has access rates here that, that driveway through that that particular document. Uh, let's see. Guys, jump in anytime. I'm just going to.
Check, check a question for you in your review of the ZBA meeting.
Uh huh.
Did they meet the requirements in that meeting of ECB? Did, did they specifically talk to them?
My daughter, they discussed them and I, as Scott said, there was a member of the ECB at the hearing. And she got up and I think emphasized what the EBA, ECB's concerns were. Kim, you were there, so, uh.
I'm also a ECB's.
I know, that's why I'm taking.
She was a pole.
So, I mean, uh, I forget who, who was the board member, committee member?
It was Adam.
Okay. She, she had a particular, I don't remember which question she asked. She had, uh, I think three questions that she asked.
And I think there was a response from the applicant.
Right, I think I answered her questions.
So yes, uh, they were brought up and they were discussed and answered. Okay.
Well, can I ask you just a question for the future even? Uh, can, can you go back like to the shoreline picture?
Sure.
No, it was on that.
Oh, I knew it was.
And they just go up. On that one right there.
This one?
Yep, just to ask, I mean, if you're showing that, that's shoreline side, right? That's what your architect just said. I mean, you just said that that's his view he wanted to see.
That's the east elevation.
Yep, so in the future, to help you, I think if you could put every single tree and everything obstruction to show us
Yeah.
what it looks like from the shoreline would definitely help.
Yeah, I, I agree.
This shows me that a house is sticking right out.
Yeah, there's a lot of sky there, isn't there?
Yeah, a lot of trees out there.
I noticed that, but I, I, I suspected Jim wanted you to take a look at the house. And he wasn't necessarily putting that into his.
He doesn't, he doesn't design trees.
His drawing program, but I agree.
A picture would show it, um, exactly where it was.
Right, and some cases, and you know, um, we have done portal simulations from the lake and a bunch of um, things along those lines.
It helps, helps us.
Yeah, I, I, I did the drawing that I showed you when I first came tonight, just because I thought that was, although that's not the exact view from the lake as sometimes we show. Um, I think it's, it's a pretty good representation of a lot of perimeter, uh, trees and forests that including quite a bit on several of this property that serve the neighborhood for lack of a better word.
Yeah, I walked the property, walked down to the coast and the beach, look back.
Yeah, it turns, I mean, you know, trees are kind of like drainage. They don't really evade property lines. And, and I think we sell ourselves short sometimes. We're just focusing on what we're looking at on the subject parcel. When actually this neighborhood as well would it, and to the, to the comment that came about temperature of the creek and shade from the trees. Yes, some trees are coming down. We've agreed to preserve some trees that proposed to remove before. Um, but actually on the southerly side, there's quite a bit of vegetation that provides the shade onto that section of the creek that we don't control.
Uh, Lance, anything, I know your comment letter was way back in April. Uh, anything that you have concerns about that we didn't talk about tonight?
Um, no, I mean, a previous comment letter was prior to some of the revisions that were made to the application that's been discussed tonight. One of which at that point in time was obviously identifying the storm water mitigation measures, which I had talked to Scott about. Um, they're providing which the town, anything over twenty thousand square foot of disturbance requires mitigation to be provided. I believe the location as shown is complying with what our, our thoughts would be on the location. I have talked to Ken Rowaney, as have Scott, about the location as it relates to flooding. Um, I have also reached out to Chris Jensen in regards to that. So I believe drainage wise, what they can be, can be done on site is in fact being done in terms of meeting our criteria for mitigation measures. I think one of the other items was fire code. We looked into that. I believe they're complying in that regards. Um, and then the, the septic system, you know, was the other area, but that reaches out to, um, can they go like wash it?
Where are you with Tyler?
Um, Tyler provided me with a couple of comments. Um, at first, the application went to Cheryl at, uh, DOH in Geneva and she contacted me and said, is this really, you know, in my purview, her purview that is? I said, I don't think so. Because we, we tried to keep it away from that need for any waivers as they call them and, and that whole situation, which is never all that pleasant. And, um, so it is an in-ground system. It complies with all the setbacks and so I contacted Tyler. Uh, Tyler had plans. Tyler left me a voicemail with a couple of items that he'd like us to adjust on the plans, but nothing super significant.
Well, any approval would be conditional upon getting approval.
Sure. Where's the?
Uh, Jim Fletcher just had some issues about the water supply, which didn't seem be a burden. Uh, county planning board had no comments on the application. On. Uh, they did review it, but they had no comments one way or the other. And the county public works had no comments because you're essentially not changing the access for, out at the CR sixteen. So that's, that's interesting. Chester Fire Company did not get back to us with any, uh, comments. Uh, ECB for the record, concerned about flooding, stream bank protection and tree removal. So that's duly noted. Uh, we appreciate their comments. They are, I know, they spent a lot of time on it. They really did. Very, a very thorough review. Um, impervious, you're at sixteen point two percent. I believe that.
Yes, whatever our calculation shows.
Okay, so less than twenty-five. All right, anybody in the audience, uh, would like to, uh, I don't believe there's anyone, anyone in virtual land want to comment on this application? Okay. Um, I guess we can move on. Is the board ready to take, uh, take action?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we're looking at a type two seeker. Uh, I will accept a bundled seeker site plan approval package of a board member as a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve a seeker type two action and your single stage site plan approval uh, at fifty-two seventy-two method drive CPN two two dash zero one eight.
Yes, we, I spent a little time on.
Um, which the plan can go over the conditions.
Um, condition number one, the site plan approval with conditions specified here is valid for a period of a hundred and eighty days. From today, once all conditions of the site plan approval have been met and shown on revised drawings and playing the revision dates, the plan board chairperson will then sign the site plans. Number two, a site development building permit application is to be completed and provided to the town candidate with development office prior to the plan board chairperson's signature being affixed to the site plans. And the three, soil stabilization and erosion control surety estimate is to be prepared by the applicant and provided to the town development office for review and processing in accordance with local of nineteen and two thousand and seventeen. I mean, and checked in seventy, one seventy-four, section one seventy-four, dash thirty-two. Number four, prior to the issuance of ability permit and approval from attending watershed inspector, I struck out New York State GOH. Um, regarding their review of the onsite waste water achievement design is to be provided to the town candidate go development office. Number five, the comments with the town engineer's letter to be addressed in satisfaction of the town engineer prior to signing by the plan board chairperson. Number six, town code enforcement officers' comments are to be addressed to the satisfaction prior to signing with the plan board chairperson. Number seven, all variances as approved by the ZBA are to be detailed on the site. Number eight, a payment of a fee in lieu of a set of part lands shall be made at the time of issuance of building permit pursuant to town code chapter one eleven in New York State town law. I've added two, you may have missed some. Number nine, um, an easement over the driveway slash or uh, to provide legal access is to be documented and depicted on the site plans prior to signatures being affixed to the plans. Number ten, it knows to be added to the plan stating that the property owner is aware and acknowledges that the property is late, is located within a flood hazard area and is subject to frequent flooding. Can you change nine to at least talk about the flow that mitigates the flow of that?
The no build zone.
So, so I did, that's the one I'm not, I have not.
Oh, you have not, okay.
So nine is just the legal access over the driveway, but the one that I did not add was that that specific one. So then we can talk about how you guys want to write that one up.
To, yeah.
We're talking about the no bid build zone.
Yeah, the overland flow.
So that's eleven.
That would be eleven.
And it would be to the, uh, uh, to the approval of the council officer cooperation with the applicant's attorney, I guess.
So for now, maybe it would be a no be added to the plans stating that no, no build, no construction of any kind is permitted within this designated area and.
Well, I think Scott said he can actually delineate on the site plan.
Yeah, we.
An area. Now, what that area is called.
And we, we could do an additional detailed drawing showing that specific area and, and distances from various objects to get there to identify the area of concern that you're talking about. I think it's been called the riparian area. Um, and then as to how it's treated, whether it's a restricted covenant or whatever, I guess, I don't know.
It has to be determined by. Right, yeah. So, so the plans are to be updated to identify this repairing and overflow area. And, um, uh, what's the last kind of no build area or no? Right, but then to be.
Could be a restricted area.
And then the covenants of said restricted area to be determined by town attorney.
Yeah. Yeah. Betsy, he'll, he'll consult with you or you consult with him before he comes up with the the method, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Can we add a comment to the effect along the lines, it says something along the line, the comments when the, within the ECB notice letter are to be addressed in satisfaction of the ECB prior to signing by the planning board chairman?
I'm sorry, can you do that again?
Could we request that the ECB notes be addressed and to the satisfaction of the ECB prior to signing by the. Could we request that the ECB notes be addressed and to the satisfaction of the ECB prior to signing by the planning board chairman?
Uh. Usually it's our job to take the recommendations of the ECB and consume as part of our deliberations. Uh, you know, I, I don't think, we've never, we don't have a precedent of sending the plan back to the ECB for their approval before we'll sign it. Uh, that's not something.
Not suggesting their approval, I'm suggesting that their comments that they've made have been addressed.
Well.
Personally, I'm, I'm thinking they have it.
I wish you had the zoning board approved it with their.
Yeah. Uh. I don't, I don't see a reason to include that.
Well, the, the primary one was, uh, the variance, which.
They got.
So we have eleven conditions, huh?
Well, that's the way.
Okay, so we have a motion for both the seeker and the site plan approval, uh, with eleven conditions. I'll second for the Scotland's, I have a second from Scott for discussion. All favor?
I.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I have recorded as four to one, four in favor, one opposed, the motion carries and. Thanks everybody's perseverance and.
Do we, is it a name seeker as well then?
It would be.
Cause it's fun, right, just want to make sure I record it correctly.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Love Scott.
Bye Scott.
All right, we move on to some new site plans, um. Oh, our Scott, okay. Just being Scott, yeah, I saw. Logan, do you know a song and dance?
Sure.
Super soft shoe, so we get our board member back. Uh, so let me read what we're looking at here, we're looking at a plan from Joseph Sessorio. Finger Lakes Public House, four oh one Lakeshore Drive, Kennedy go in New York, uh, New York, representing Arms Properties. One LLC, County North Shore Boulevard, Kennedy go under property four oh five, Lakeshore Drive, requesting a site plan approval. Very recently paved and straight parking area, sixteen hundred square foot concrete patio and a non-attached walk-in pool. Representing, uh, presenting the applicants. Yeah, just. I hear they're doing gangbusters, I guess.
Every time I go by, it's packed. Hmm, great food, great food.
Yeah, they, they have good write-ups on Facebook.
Yeah. I was impressed, I've been, I've been there, the other owners that own that establishment, the food there's.
So, so I would be objected to that, I haven't gone there to eat yet.
Yeah.
The new fair yet myself.
I've been there many times, I was gonna say that one.
Oh, you're putting it on the record?
I'm on the record, I've been there, you've been there. I was there Friday, didn't say the one.
Let's see who you were.
Can I have your badge on?
Won't give you the rest. What is their signature?
They have a signature.
They're, they're.
Their onion rings are fantastic, hot support.
Oh.
Do you say onion rings?
Onion rings, yeah, are phenomenal.
Yeah, it's good food. Yeah, they're very good cook in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, man, I'm just.
I think we need a site visit.
Pretty sure I can zoom in.
We'll be journeying, yeah.
Wait, wait, I think I, I think there used to be a member that always used to ask when their, when food is going to be provided for.
That's true.
You could take him for that.
That's true. All right, we got full board again, let's move on, Logan, uh, want to tell us what's happened down there, I guess, we talked.
So this is a little backwards than the usual site plan, because they kind of inherited the built structures that they have there, so. Um, when they were built, no one considered getting a permit to have that done. So now they're kind of backtracking, making things right on the site, so they can proceed and have blessing of the town, more or less. Um, so, um, they did shut down a couple of trees, um, for the new patio.
They cut the plant off.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so the tree was over in this area and, um, the golf course did not necessarily like that, so what I've done is. I've proposed, um, moving the existing fence back towards the property line on the south. And that will give us enough space, uh, to, uh, plant three new trees to kind of compensate for the one that was taken down. I've also proposed, um, a series of planters along the patio as kind of a protection from parking lot. We were going to do ballards, but we're doing, going to do planters to kind of, you know, make it more appealing, so you're not, you, you're in the patio area, you're not looking out into the parking lot. It creates more.
Your safety too.
Yeah, exactly, and so the reinforced planters, so and there's space far enough apart, so if a car was going, I think thirty miles an hour would not penetrate through the. Planters.
We have a plan that shows.
Yeah, we have, we have a landscaping plan.
Logan, on your fence, did you talk to the country club about that?
Oh, well, there, there's a fence that's already there.
There.
The borders.
Right.
Stuck in the south one. Yeah, I'm talking the south side of, by the, the trailer park.
Gotcha.
So we're, you know, moving even farther towards that property line, just create more green space. Plants, yeah, so you can see planters, if you go one more down there, that's the landscaping plan, I believe. So you can see we're proposing three new trees here, uh, we did move it away from the easement, uh, as requested during the PRC meeting. It isn't that runs through the property or. Yeah.
So the intended use of the concrete of the south that's for future, right now it looks like it's part of the parking lot.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we have the permitted use to use it as seating, event space, so right now it's third, they're not doing anything with it. They want to make sure that they have the blessing of the town to use it as it's intended.
Are you proposing any kind of, if you're adding more to where you're already just, already had done already, a fence to hide that cooler that's back there?
Uh, that's not the intention right now, um, it will have a planter, uh, to the south of it with, um. I have, I've proposed, uh, a nine mark, which will get to, you know, six, seven feet tall, which has the potential to block it. Um. We let all trailers going to be pulled out of there. Um, and that's their intention, um. After this is kind of all said and done, they would like to propose storage at a later time, but they will try to get that out of there and then. Probably come back to get, um, another permit, but right now we're just dealing with comments from Chris Jensen and. Um, making sure that we're in compliance with what they have there right now. Um, there was question from, Chris sent some. Comments, uh, July nineteenth, or that's when we sent it back in. Sent some comments a couple of weeks ago and responded to those, um. Small things like dimensioning, uh, parking aisles and the parking stalls that's on the site plan. There's a question about the fire code of the, with the cooler, I had Brennan write up, um, response to. Um, Chris, that was sent to him today, I don't think you've seen that, uh, that goes over the criteria for fire code. It's based on the overall footprint, which we've included the freezer, which is actually attached via the roof. And, um, I have building specs of the actual cooler for installation. The criteria for that is only two inch separation between the existing building and the, the cooler, and right now it's a four foot separation. Um, so as far as we're concerned, the cooler is compliant with fire code. Then.
Do you feel you have an adequate number of parking spaces for all the success you had?
We are under, but you can't expand based on, uh, there is a lease agreement, um, with the property owner. That separates it between the gas station and the public house, so they're dealing with existing conditions and. I don't know if you've seen it, prior to them paving it, it was a total mess and in my mind, this is a. A way better situation than they had previously.
Have they had an issue with parking with, again, given their success?
Uh, I, I know.
Parking the gas station?
I, I have not seen any parking at the gas station, I, I'm pretty sure the parking over at the kind of grand and.
Oh, walking.
Walking over.
I, I would say Logan, I did, I was there Friday, like I said, there was a truck parked right in that north area up there.
Oh, right up in here?
Yeah, right in there.
Yeah.
There's a couple of trucks in there.
Yeah, I mean, there are places to park, there's. North of there, there's a parking lot, there's like the healing center. So I'm not sure if people are using that after hours, but I know every time I go by after work, it's just packed and so. But it's an existing condition and they.
It is existing, I, I, but I don't want to. Know any, uh, you know, situation that isn't, you know, that.
Right, well, I mean, the, the maximum occupancy is eighty-seven people, so I know now parking in there can hold.
That's in the building.
In the building, yeah.
Now you're gonna have.
Right.
A creep pad, soon that's gonna be.
Right, well, they're gonna have to apply for a new, uh, occupancy permit based on the. The enlargement of potential people coming in there, I stopped by there today and I had that conversation with them. About the occupancy, since they are expanding, they're gonna have to get. And, and, or they, they limit, they count, it limits the number of people they have there.
So it's so, yeah, eighty-six.
Yeah, that would become a building code.
With the patio.
Yeah.
They don't consider parking, which adequate parking.
Yeah.
Do we have a parking ratio requirement?
We don't, so, but, yeah, it's, it can suggest and the board. Let's say yes or no, I did want to point out that our code does require shade trees, we have them, now that's. The entirety, not, you know, city versus town, but the board would have to even grant waivers, support the grant waivers for that.
Well, if, if you include the planters, I have those two trees in the planters.
Right, so I guess it would be up to the board whether those counted as shade trees.
I think there's a shade tree up there by handicap parking.
And they're looking, yeah, in the tree.
Ken gets back to what you said, previous application, yeah.
Yeah.
Get the total picture. Is the area where they currently dine outside around the buildings, is, is that gonna be remain or is that gonna?
No, that's gonna remain.
So it'll be that area plus the concrete?
Yeah, and I think some concrete spaces is gonna be more like, if you've seen Jose Willie's where they have a tent out. Um, I think they want to have a space outside where they can have an event or something like that. People can go under a tent and, you know, listen to music or something like that.
Well, yeah, I'm just worried about parking, because I, it's already.
No, no, fair enough.
If it's going, if they're already across the street, north and.
I mean, we could look at rearranging the parking way out.
What are your sizes of your space?
Nine by eighteen.
Oh, that's.
Go a little smaller than that. If you're ten by twenty.
Yeah.
Squeezes the.
I mean, I've done different scenarios of rearranging the parking.
Yeah.
Lot, and I've only been able to get two extra spots and that's kind of making, so it limits this space here. And I, I feel like having this space open is, it'd be good for just emergency access.
Visibly.
Yeah.
Did you ask them about C-Mac parking?
Uh.
Do they park?
I did not, and that's one thing that I forgot to ask them, but I imagine they, they don't allow T-Mac parking based on the fact they want people to come in and eat.
I know Dodgers allowed it if we ate there.
Yeah, I haven't seen any signage saying.
That, that's an option.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you. I just, I can't, I don't know how to rearrange it to make it. To add more parking unless they redo the lease lines and the, but again, it's, it's a circulation problem, problem right now. How do you have two businesses, you know, come together and not?
It's certainly improvement over what was there before, sort of, run in the right direction.
Right, yeah.
Uh. I, I, I just have a problem with approving a, a concrete pad for the use of, of outdoor dining. If we bring more people and more cars and when we already have a parking problem, and maybe. I don't know how we condition the approval that, that concrete area could not be used for outdoor dining until some sort of resolution. To the parking situation is.
Well, I think, I think it's based on how many people they're allowing in their establishment, they have enough parking to allow eighty-seven people. That they maybe not allow for the expansion of occupant, occupancy. But I mean, then you're limiting a business on making money.
Yeah, but again, it's a fire, fire safety issue, so I mean, that's, that's what we're here for.
But I mean, they're, they're not, they're not parking illegally, they're not like blocking access around.
No, but I, I, I think the fact that they park on a site without approval, because technically I think you, if you use all, all site parking.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, probably.
But those are the cars that just get taller?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's another, the people aren't asking if they can park, they're just, they want to go and eat and they're gonna find a parking spot. And it's kind of sad on another.
Kind of creates, I mean, it kind of limits itself, like if there's no room to park, you don't park, nobody goes somewhere else.
I mean, what, what are you hoping to check, what would, what would be the right number of parking lots, right? Right now there's thirty-six. That's what I counted.
Yes.
Maybe what was.
I think we do have a ratio, don't we, for, uh, in the zoning code for dining or.
No, you.
No, we don't.
I know, based on the numbers, yeah, I know you asked the question.
No, it's up to, I mean, we can use standards, national standards, but it's up to, it's a purview of the board.
We used to.
We used to, but we took that out.
I, I learned that, I learned that on D E charter with Chris.
So, so I.
Sound like, sound like a number man.
So I use, uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers to.
That's the, one of our suggestions.
Parking accounts, and they have one per sixty-two point five square feet is required for a restaurant, and I have forty spaces at one per sixty-five. Square feet, so I'm quite real close to their standards.
Okay.
What, where are the other four, where are the forty?
Eight F.
Any gap spots?
Is there three?
There's three. There's three. Three slots, there's.
Yep.
Thirty-nine.
Oh, got it, okay.
So thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Does the plan, uh, list the forty spaces provided, I mean, say that parking provided forty spaces. In your zoning data block or whatever, I haven't seen that again, sorry. Does, does your plan reflect the forty spaces that are provided, choose, I mean, other than just delineated.
Did you note that on the.
I note that, it's, it's on the, of the site plan, uh, bulk table.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the site plan.
So we're working with forty spaces?
Thirty-nine.
No, I think it's thirty-nine, unless, I don't see the forty.
One in the corner.
Oh, what, are we taking that at the end?
Twenty-six, open back, section ten down the bottoms, three, two base of thirteen and eleven, I believe that's.
And three motorcycles and a golf cart by the front.
And three motorcycles and a golf cart by the temples.
Yeah, I've seen that.
I've done. So what what's the final count?
It's forty.
It's forty?
Is this a space? It is.
That's it.
Okay.
Alright, so forty.
Okay, so you get forty spaces, uh given the, right now, the current occupancy is eighty seven. People. Two per car. There are periods when people have to park off site. I I would, I I'm just worried about expanding the use without expanding the park. That's essentially, and that's why I'm saying, okay, as far as what you did and what you have completed, uh I I think that's sort of fee to complete. Uh but as far as allowing for additional. Uh occupancy or dining area without considering the. Uh parking, knowing we do have off-site parking now, like I. Then come back or.
Without without, without that space being used as outdoor dining, how many parking spaces can you get in?
Right. I I was just looking at that, you can't get money in that.
So we get like what, three more spaces?
I was thinking maybe four, well, no, that was just, you know, then you lose the corner.
Two.
Well. I'm just thinking that, arguments is that we're creating.
Me, the driveway, so that's a week too.
The argument is that we're taking away potential parking area, then maybe that's the equivalent, find a way to accommodate. Two to three more spaces, but I don't know.
What's the area of the concrete pad, so sixteen hundred square feet, is that what we?
Yes, I read it.
Sean, and they have to come back and put a tent up, right? And that would equate to how many spaces according to the standards?
Come back for a time? No, we could issue a permit for that temporary for that.
You get two more, you only get two more spaces.
No, what would you need for additional sixteen hundred? It's one.
Uh I that's.
Add one for every sixteen four.
Oh.
Sixty four.
Six hundred forty.
Sixty two point five square feet, oh, build a building.
Four feet.
Not, I don't, yeah, but I don't, I'm just saying that it it's a usable, oh, so yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah, it's essentially outside dining.
Yeah.
I mean, that's twenty five, you'd need.
Another twenty five.
Sixteen hundred, but I just didn't have.
I was just trying to make the argument that the the existing condition, if the argument was that we're using potential parking area to offset.
I do, yeah.
You know, how many more spaces could you actually get, right? Maybe there's a way to at least accommodate that, I don't.
We have seen other places try to accomplish something, something similar, the place on East Lake Road, the the pizza firm. Ran that ran into parking issues and. That could be part of the reason that they're not even there.
The brick government place.
Yeah.
That was here, pizza.
It's business, right? If they don't have enough room for parking, you know, something's around by, they're not parking, they're going somewhere else.
Yeah, kind of like twisted rail, there's no.
Yeah.
That's all public, right?
Yeah.
They're parked in the church, yep.
Yeah.
Well, okay, uh. I would just. Like to come up with some mechanism that we could. Either Chris or somebody readdress the use of that concrete pad. Before they choose that, right, okay. Do you wanna build it? I I'm not worried about losing the two spaces, cause that's something, that's something issue. And I certainly think landscaping, fireworks and uh planters and that would certainly add to the, you know, the look, improve the site. But uh.
I know they, that some of the concrete pads already there, maybe they don't wanna tear it out per se.
Oh, okay, that's one of the things that.
But everything that's, that we're asking for is already there.
Okay, other than you're gonna take the trailer.
Right, yeah, that's. And we're adding ballads, baller or planters for the safety of patio area, everything but that's you listed off initially is already existing.
The cooler would offer what, one more, the trailer would offer one more slot.
I I designated that green space, just.
Yeah, cause there is none.
Yeah, right. And what you're saying is they're probably gonna wanna replace, they're gonna come to us, say storage. That's gonna be a temporary storage, I mean, that's what they're saying anyways.
Okay, let's uh move on, folks. Same, uh I just wanna make sure it's. I think this parking talked about that, city of Kansas, where the fire department did not respond to this question, understand? So some zoning, uh Chris had the issue of, you mentioned Logan, uh the county planning. Board did not comment on it. The work is about a new, another property owner. Uh coming on board with this or?
No, it, uh, well, we had on Encore, it wasn't updated when we sent the application, so we updated.
I mean, it's.
Right, so there's a new.
So one of the names I threw out was is the current and future owner, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's a free free download on.
Yeah.
Or their partner.
Yeah, they're leasing the building, there's, there's a corporation that owns the property and then.
Right.
There's a public house that has their own ownership that are leasing the property from the property owner.
Okay, uh let's move on. It's a type two action on seeker and we have a resolution for a single stage site plan. I'll make a motion to bundle the seeker as a type two action that further. Actions required by this board regarding seeker as a result and also uh recommend or move that we approve the single stage site plan approval. Uh but I would like to add some sort of condition that prior to the use of that concrete patio for outdoor dining that uh. Get some sort of scrutiny from either this board or Chris Jensen or in terms of concern on part. And I have, how we say that?
Does Chris actually give a permit to allow that to be used as an outdoor parking or does he, you're asking for the whole of that, right?
C E O? C E O?
A C E O for the outside area?
Yeah.
He will look at it.
Yeah, so maybe better to find what that area is gonna be used for and if there's any increased space on.
I'm willing, I'm willing to to dumb it down to just Chris Jensen's uh.
So prior to occupancy.
Yeah, prior to the occupancy of the use of the, the use of the concrete patio.
Okay.
That Chris Jensen.
The use of what for what?
Any use, I guess.
I mean, right now, there's nothing there.
There's nothing there, well.
So, I mean, the use of.
What, as a.
Pageant.
But apparently, apparently the intent is to have outdoor seating.
Yeah.
It's not there yet.
Yeah.
Prior to them doing that, that Chris Jensen gives some either C E O or some sort of authorization for them to use it. Based on his. Analyzing, reviewing the parking needs required for that use.
That's this board's, I'm not sure you would feel comfortable with that.
You you want to. So. We have the town code of first officers comments to be addressed.
House. Right.
If this isn't one of those comments, you're specifically asking about the parking, right? Uh that's what you're trying to highlight.
Yeah, I realize parking's hard, hard for.
Right. So the board should decide tonight whether they want to give him direction.
Well, okay, Chris, we just leave it, the probably use of Chris's review and. For his compliance as far as safety and if 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 need be, if he feels he's gotta come back to us for. To address the parking issue, that's his prerogative to send it back. Yeah, I'll leave it updated.
Okay. Okay.
So the three common, the three conditions, which one is code of first officers comments being addressed, do you want me to text?
That would be.
Elaborate that a little more?
I think that's.
That's separate, yeah, so separate, he talks about the core use and protecting the patio.
So fourth thing is Chris is to look at it specifically as a release to parking prior to the use of the.
Concrete patio. Okay, uh we get the other, the other three conditions, only one that one. Is the board clear on what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll second that one.
Okay, I have a motion for myself, Scott, for the discussion. I should ask if anybody else wants to comment in public, but I don't think anyone is. Okay, so that being said, I'll call the question, old figure.
Aye.
Close.
That's your.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
Something, talk to the owners.
I'm I'm going there right now.
We wore you down.
Thank you guys.
Have one for us. Okay, Mr. Hill. We're around to, we're looking at C P N twenty two oh forty five, Scott Hill, owner of property. Forty two twenty category sixteen, request a single state site plan approval, construction of a new twenty four by thirty six foot garage. Uh pending Z B A approval, which he did receive last Tuesday night. So I think you're ready to talk to us.
Or do you have questions?
Your answer is, he's not, he's not gonna have one.
He's not, maybe he'll.
Oh.
Will say, not even to appear.
This is Rocco.
Yeah.
That's shape. Is it good, okay, or?
He doesn't know what he said, he's got all kinds of.
Well, glad he didn't.
We wish him well.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
So he he doesn't think it's been properly figured.
Circle with the.
Well, I think the board is pretty clear is what you want to do here.
Uh it's open themselves.
Yeah. It is, and it was something that you had applied for back uh in two thousand.
What?
Fourteen.
Eighteen, was it? Yeah.
Yeah.
And you got approvals then, but it it lapsed and.
The rules did change, our steep slope ordinance went into effect.
Right, steep slopes, yeah, so you're under a little tighter, tighter control.
They received, you received a variance though, right?
From the zoning work?
Yeah.
Uh can you tell me, I saw like five trees, they gonna take all them down?
Are there trees?
Yeah.
Talk about trees a lot.
They're pretty serious trees, but I mean.
Black walnuts, so as the last discussion, bad trees. We're, I'm I'm a tree lover, I'm trying to try to save as many trees as we can this project. Uh only the trees that are necessary to.
That's all I.
They have to raise something. I will say have Rocco, you've got an area disturbance that you're changing your ten foot setback on your like. Existing road that you have up there, you're gonna have to move your silk fence all the way around the corner to that property line. To mitigate any of that disturbance right there. That and you've got this wire going across the road, are you gonna change that or?
Well, you guys really, uh. Yeah, that's a former underwire, I just kinda left it there.
Went up the shed.
Went to the shed and while you're like, I don't lose it.
Oh.
You know, change that, we won't, we'll have, obviously, we want that, we'll have that where it's right like.
Yes. And you don't, my home options, oh. You're not gonna have an existing retaining wall, there's just gonna, just gonna be a big steep slope there coming down on the sides?
Well, again, I'm looking into the details, Jake, who's done a lot of the. Stonework at the neighbors' properties, particularly Lewis's and Mark's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to him about side retaining walls and I would incorporate that. And then part of the construction, we think maybe the foundation becomes an engineered design retaining wall for the setback.
Yeah, that would help me out, a bit erosion on that, same delay from anything else.
Yeah, you know, obviously Rocco is, he had a given error to write all that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Rocco, it would have been very helpful if he had existing features, man, what what's there now? Uh you know, things like existing trees.
I have the country myself.
Uh no, I don't think he's gonna draw.
Well.
We can pull up on.
Certainly, you have pulled your loop, you have, but it's.
Oh, go above, but uh we.
And we've done it in twenty twenty ones.
I just wanna. That up, uh oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
Uh just a comment about the the photo of the sign being placed, it's great. The the, how many properties we go out, especially the new kid and I, you know, I sort of know where it is, but the signs there proves that the signs are tough.
Yeah, that's a new thing.
Yeah, and we had it last couple of weeks ago on one of the projects, that's nice, and that's why it should be.
Very helpful.
Does the existing driveway have to be removed to comply with the warning to?
Two driveways?
That came up with the C B A.
That was a question, that was a comment.
I don't know how it was left. You intend to keep that other driveway?
Well, I'd like to keep the shed, because again, I, you know, I'm on a slab there, I don't, I don't have a basement to the house, I have this second building.
Yeah.
Uh it's on the property this morning here, and I'm really looking for more. Bigger storage space and obviously that's difficult to get to because it's down on the roadway, so the shed would provide long tractor yard and whatever, so I'd like to keep that. And then that road just provides better access if I could keep that.
That's.
Well, they didn't, it wasn't part of the variance, it wasn't part of the variance.
We didn't know it on the front end.
Termination, I'm I'm just reading from the definition, so it's one, plan access is law parcel. Additional driveway in the proposed garage, so we need an approval by the planning board, requirements set forth in access control two two twenty. There's seventy five B two A B.
Yeah, so the planning board leave that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so then I think you're 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 being compliant by at least taking out that ten foot. Buffer with your name. I think if you took that off, it would cause, it would cause more road problems.
Right, it's a solid, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's withstood.
It is blacktop.
It is.
Yeah, and this will be blacktop. But the intonance, I'm reading whatever it is. The uh your previous act uh a- application back in fourteen had a elevation drawing of the garage, proposed what the garage is gonna look like.
Yes.
Uh is it the same architecture or is it different?
This is same.
Okay, it was a different dimension than.
You know, I, again, when I. I've gotten advice of this, I wasn't. Fixed on the actual of elevation of the building itself, but I do have some example drawings of.
The drawing from uh from fourteen was a beautiful garage.
Oh, that's.
So if you're gonna.
That's the concept.
That's the one you're gonna do, maybe it's smaller.
Yes.
The other one bigger.
Yes.
Okay, so how's the board feel about shoreline guidelines and you should any, any issues there?
I don't, I think your, the height of your building is fifteen feet.
Yeah.
The. Yeah, your house is.
House.
Truly tucked, yeah, tucked in behind the existing house.
Yeah, well. I think the only concern that continues to get raised is the steep slope.
This was a significant variance.
Yeah.
You're gonna keep that culvert, you're gonna add another culvert. There's a pretty good swell there, I mean, it's pretty deep surface.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering about, retaining walls to retain some of that.
Issues, we're we're gonna end up improving the trade it just yourself, it's kind of an assist, that's not.
It's fairly flat too, your driveway to the road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause Westlake Road is crowned.
Yep.
I get all the great runoff from south, and I had to put my own catch bases in there to help, help that situation.
You'll need a county permit.
Yeah.
And I guess they'll, they'll uh, they'll prove this.
But I need to take care of.
So they would approve the size of that twelve inch, if you need a twelve inch, whether that's adequate or not. And it's for the permit and. Yeah, that along with your encouragement into the highway with the driveway for garage, that would be part of that permit.
Yes.
I noticed a four-inch plastic bike coming out of the bank. What's that drain? Maybe you'll find out when you cut it off.
I'll have an answer for you. I mean, it's existing. It's been there since I've been.
I mean, it's it's, you know, it's it's regular SDR forty thirty-five.
It's a it's a it's a drainage. It's a water drainage.
No, could be a some sort of tile field or something for stormwater.
Yeah.
Up the hill. And it is in the, I think it's in the area of the public garage, right? I mean, you'll have to come out.
Yeah.
Oh, it had to come out even because of rain.
Right. We'll find out where it is and mitigate it.
Okay, I can't see where it would be a neighbors. And you, you know, you didn't avoid up the bottom. There's no easement record for it, and so there's no easement.
Well, it's way above.
At adverse position. Yep, okay.
Okay.
Spend enough time with it.
Road property, which used to drain down into the yard, but that's been mitigated also.
Should stays up. Are you, Scotty, doing any lighting on the garage?
Just curtsy lights on.
Hanging hanging over the doorways. They would have to be, I think somebody brought that up somewhere. Just. I didn't see a phosphorus.
Probably not on the plans because it predates it. There's no drainage. Just grass, right? You're gonna put back, no landscaping, land.
Did you think about some sort of ground cover, ground litter, something on that bank?
Sure, sure.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Just start.
I thought that was part of the map, so that the.
That's true.
I thought it's got a it's the mats got it's all seed. Yeah.
So it is.
You're still a lot of work on this kind of thing.
Well, your sequence is good. Yeah, the ways you control elements. I think one element we talked earlier is just making sure the limits of disturbance was accurate, because you're gonna have.
So.
Just wanted to make sure that the main reason for the the disturbance limit to be accurate is just so the code enforcement officer understands the limit of where everything's going to be working, so that he's got a way to monitor the site. Overall, I think what was provided.
I think you stated the the garage will have water and electric?
Well, it depend, I think what you guys know, how you're gonna get water, I think waters on the side.
Waters on that side.
Okay, because I talked to, well, way back when, I talked to Jeremy Fields about drilling under the road for water. Quarterly three thousand.
Oh, yeah. So unless you're.
I think.
Brewing or something.
Rain collection.
We have rain barrels.
Yeah. All right, so no water.
No water.
Okay, record shows no water to the building. Uh, I think that covers my notes. Anybody else have anything? ECB did not review it.
Yes, they did.
Do you think?
They don't like the more tree question.
It's a steep slope.
Steep slope.
Steep slopes, that's right.
Apparently, we don't care about ECB's comments once variance is an issue.
Well, I think the variance didn't have to do this. It had to do with setback.
No, it was a steep slope variance. It's four thousand. Yeah. No, the zoning board grants a variance. This is this configuration and square footage and disturbance is not allowed within the steep slope area. So they grant a variance to allow. Needs to be cautioned against setting precedence of noncompliance in the steep slope protection area.
Tim, as a as a member of the ECB, do you feel that the ECB comments are taken into consideration from the zoning board's view?
There's frustration.
So this is me talking out loud. I'm not an attorney and I don't know procedurally exactly how it would work, but I'm pretty sure that once the ZBA grants determination on it, if you had to, if you were objecting to it, then procedurally, it would require us to submit that objection to the ZBA's ruling and have the rule on it. Or what? No, actually, I take it back. Once the ZBA rules on it, that's it.
Yeah.
There's no determination. There's no changing it. It's over with. It's a determination granted by the code enforcement officer that can be overturned by the ZBA.
Does my previous statement correct then that once they issue a variance, the previous comments don't matter?
I don't know that you guys don't have to consider it, but I think the question becomes this, to what extent, right?
Right.
Like, now they granted this variance for steep slopes. And the argument is that the ECB has conditions over steep slopes. You in a sense would be asking them to go back and get a new variance from the ZBA to accommodate your concern. And I don't I don't I don't know that it can't be done that way. I just don't know this can. That makes sense.
I I'm I'll go on record in saying that the ZBA set a a significant precedent granting this variance.
Well, whatever their reasons were.
Right.
They had findings, they had conditions, it was approved, considered. Now, I think this board, as part of your review, most certainly weighs all of those site characteristics in there, but I think you make a good point. As, okay, to what extent though? Like, all right, we don't like it. It's disturbing the steep slope. You in a sense would be telling them to go back and get another variance. Yeah.
Right.
Obviously, they had more from a mechanical, construction, engineering standpoint. Can that slope be stabilized and has 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 the applicant provided adequate protection for it?
From from my perspective, I I believe that they've provided the erosion center control, the construction sequence, the stabilization measures that would most certainly adequately stabilize the site during and after construction, but.
Which I.
Right.
Yeah.
But impact the steep slope.
Is our purview. Yep. Uh, once the variance is granted, you just have to make sure it works.
So on that subject, Scott, you talked about possibly doing retaining walls. If you did that, would we have to come back and show that on the plan or would we condition that to show that would be?
I thought you mentioned the foundation would be engineered.
We're talking about two different things. I mean, I know that we had a lot of talk about the sleep, the steep slope in in the area at Jackson's garage. And there's gonna be, there's been a lot of engineering work and consideration of that. This is the area, and we will try, we're gonna try to mitigate mitigate the steepness of the slope. And if necessary, provide a wall retaining wall to make sure that we don't have any erosion.
So that's what I'm wondering, does that need to be on the plan?
What what would happen is is you would request that retaining wall detail be provided.
On a condition.
And right.
That's.
Did that thing separate?
If there was anywhere we like to change or during constructions, something would occur, all of a sudden, oh, arises a need, what's the procedure?
Yeah.
Submit.
You've asked for details of retaining walls.
Right.
Number of times.
Yeah, we can ask for a detail.
Now, whether that affects the ZBA, essentially, since how the plan has changed. That's not our call, but it's changed significantly.
Well, then the.
It'd be a retaining wall.
Because it's a structure, you'd have to make sure that it's within the setback that was granted for the product.
Well, the retaining wall becomes a structure. Yours. What you thought.
Yeah, the mat.
Mat.
Yeah, that was very detailed.
Yeah, the mat, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's it's close.
Yeah, and I wouldn't talk about retaining wall that I wouldn't talk about, particularly what Aaron has.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm willing to do whatever it works to.
Yeah, the green will be tight in the area out there, but.
Get care of that. Sure, I mean, obviously.
You're on the other side of it here. You donate any wood you're. Okay. Mark here, I I guess you still have some concerns.
Well, I guess.
What's the ZBA's act that it's?
Some, not speaking to Canada, and I'm not trying to create issues, but some communities, when a zoning board or air variance application is provided to the ZBA, sometimes they refer recommendation to playing more further consideration and prior to the ZBA taking action. Just a thought that not every application renders that need, but maybe there are some that do. At which point the ZBA could recommend, at least, we've used it. I I'm pretty sure I remember them in the past coming in.
In fact, we have our awarded business recommendations to the ZBA.
That's a discussion we've had internally this week, and I think that that might be the recommendation staff is going to globally.
I think you just.
Because there's a disconnect between the ZBA and the planning board, that's one thousand percent.
And it's.
And the ECB, these boards are probably working together.
They are, they are woefully lacking in any engineering.
Absolutely, yeah.
They don't have an engineer there. And a lot of times the question comes up, you know, will this work?
Right.
And that's that's actually my concern. I mean, we keep putting these rules in place that we want to selectively follow, and that's not something that I copestetically, it's not the project. In this particular case, the project, I think it it the design that I've seen fits within the community and it it doesn't have a major negative impact, but there's reasons that we have the rules in place. And that's what I struggle with is a constant deviation to that to the rules.
So does this fit within our steep slope town code?
No.
No, that's why they got the variance.
Right, they got the variance.
Right, that's the variance is for, when you say it's significant, it's because of the size of the.
I think significant in that that it's not permitted because of the four, we have a limit of four thousand square feet, you cannot disturb or an accessory structure in the steep slope area, a moderately steep slope area, which you're you're at the lead twenty percent.
Yeah.
So it prohibits that. So this zoning board said, well, that's okay. We'll grant you relief from that. You can go ahead and do it, yeah, with a variance.
They rely a lot on precedent. And I I I heard quoted in meeting that, well, there are other garages up and down. We'll stick with it.
Right.
Same thing, so just another garage and nobody, no residents came out in opposition. So that's another factor that they consider.
They've actually all letters of support.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And Chip is my neighbor and he's
Oh, Chip's my neighbor.
From the board meeting. But the other thing is you know, when I got the original verse, there was no steep.
No, there wasn't.
I don't I don't think this is specifically against your project.
No, this is just more of a failure.
Yeah, you're an old man.
We are.
I don't want to.
Been there, done it.
Okay, are we ready to move?
Sure.
Trees to be removed, we talked about that. So the lane taken out the order. Oh, ECB, MRB had a letter from July twenty-first outlining some of their concerns, mostly regarding discussion shoreline guidelines.
A reminder in nature, okay, most of them were just some notes to be added. I looked at our previous letter from back when it was first coming in and I think most of the drainage comments that we got at that point in time had been addressed on this project.
Uh, again, the county plane board, no comments. I guess it was over there, not me.
Didn't we? Oh, June.
That's right. I would think June.
Yeah.
Cheshire Fire, no comments. So county Public Works need a permit, highway permit for you. You can get your plan signed. Uh, okay. Anything else? Seeker is type two. So let's move ahead. Uh, anybody in public? I'll make that announcement. There's no one. Okay, very none. Let's celebrate.
Well, I will make a motion if we're okay to bundle. I'll bundle the seeker type two and the single stage site plan. CPN twenty-two zero four-five F four two two zero County Route sixteen.
There's the seven conditions that I have identified previously, and I added two more based on tonight's discussion. One, uh, this would be number eight. The plane board provided a waiver for the additional driveway to in total on the proposed garage site as set forth in section two twenty to seventy-five B to A B. Assuming that the board is comfortable with that. And then number nine is the phosphorus notes.
Yeah, but are we gonna make sure that silk fence moves up?
It's still, I think it's in MRB's. About the disturbance area and the silk fence.
Yeah, the disturbance area mark silk fence.
I'll make sure.
I think I have it in ten, but I can add it to just one inch.
We sold it.
Relocated.
Full intent on the disturbance. Okay, Amanda, did I have a second?
I'll say.
Five seconds. Okay, for the discussion. All favor.
Hi.
Close. Thanks. Can the record show the focus four to one favor the patient. For carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. When I consult in steep slopes, I'll come in.
That sounds great.
Thank you all. Is that it?
Um.
It's Miller time.
Talk to Rocco. You talked to Rocco, tell me just.
Yeah, hopefully feels better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, good, Jerry? Oh, alright.
It's just a sketch plan.
Which I, sorry you had to wait for. Sketch plan, but it's certainly a
This is exciting.
Nice project. Yes, it is. Better than the table. Um, for those I have not met yet, Rich T D from Marathon Engineering. You should hear what's another client. Um, tonight, I'm representing Seth and Elizabeth, owner of properties and Joseph's Artisan Meats. At the corner of North Street and Brickyard Road. Joseph's business has been booming. He was in here for a sketch plan, I believe it was in two thousand seventeen. He had gotten a one of the setback variances back then due to circumstances. The project didn't move forward at that point. He is actually engaged, designed, built team, architect, beyond the civil end to to move this thing forward. So he's looking at not only the expansion he needs now, but trying to make sure he's got space for the future. He sees the his business constantly runs. He loves the location. He loves being in Canada, but he loves employing people from Canada. So he really is looking to expand the existing site he has um, with a two-story addition that will be here and wrap around the side that's a little under forty-five thousand square foot footprint. And then a one-story addition that was, remember, search me, just under seven thousand square feet, that's gonna house maintenance equipment for the site. He does a lot of smoking of meats, so I imagine he's probably gonna store some of the wood chips and things like that in there. Get them out of cover. A lot of that storage right now happens out behind his building in this area right here. Um, much of his expansion is gonna includes automation. So he's gonna need some more employees, but not as many as you might expect with the amount of space that he's adding up. So spent a lot of time working through this, figured he needed fifty parking spaces. He's expecting forty-two to forty-five employees and a few missing parking spaces. So we've taken this existing parking area here and restriped some additional spaces, making sure that we've got room for truck movements up there. Added a parking area off of the existing driveway here to house those employee spaces. So this site right now is primarily. So this site right now is primarily probably about eighty percent of previous government, so this is a redevelopment site. Um, right now his current process is all deliveries. And outgoing product all happens at the smartly ended building in the one moving back. Uh, this expansion is now allowing him to have just incoming coming this into the building. Everything processed straight through the building, and then we've added three loading docks on the southern end. Um, to house outgoing products. Now, on what we had submitted for the sketch plan, we had an in driveway and out driveway for those truck turn movements. Um, I've been running about the biggest truck that you can get, which is a fifty-four foot reefer trailer with what they call interstate tractor, which is basically a long nose, big sleeping car. Um, they make big turns. So we have gotten feedback from both Jim Fletcher and City V P W that they really don't like this right. Do a lot of work and the turns are tight. I think I can get a current backup district. From all three docks. So I'm working on that right now, it's gonna skinny up some of this, but might give us a little more green space. In here, which, um, the hope is that right now there's a few trees along there, hopefully I can expand some of that green space. Um, get a few more plantings in there that to pretty up the front of that. Um, these loading docks are all gonna sit raised, so this isn't gonna be a drop in like this loading dock. This is all gonna be at grade drain away from the building, that that's gonna be a full feed hiding trucks. So we're gonna have some, that's gonna happen in this end to make all that happen. Um, that's kind of just it, we're served by all utilities. I think our. Biggest trouble is probably gonna be, they gotta get through county sewers and they seem to take a long time to use, but we're removing cover from their sewer. Still gonna be plenty of cover, um, and they're probably gonna wanna know a little bit more about the additional footage from the additional road.
Is, is water on your side of the road too, or is it on the other side?
Water is.
North Street.
I know there's, while it runs out of North Street, I don't recall.
Water comes across here, but we're serviced up here.
But there's no concern cover on the North Street, but inside.
No, because from North Street, this goes down into ditch and then comes up shirt, so we're really just gonna be cutting that kind of side lately. Drainage standpoint. Once again redevelopment site, so we've got a lot of tools in the toolbox to, to meet D C requirements as a redevelopment site, but. Primarily most everything from Brickyard Road, all flows this way across site, there's a large swell in here, flows down into pipe. There's a little bit of this frontage that goes into the North Street drainage. I'll be meeting with all the requirements that may need to from a D C standpoint, as far as water quality, quantity, and. We may be increasing imperious little bit on site with this area and that addition that are going areas that are currently grass, but. I'm also gonna try to open up some of these areas to try and balance that. Keeping my qualifications on redevelopment. I do have to say, I love the display just outside the door on the site.
Is that the first time we've seen that?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I saw it on my comment for Pearson.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
Pretty amazing to see a site go from those very old times through these changes and don't often get to see those.
So Rich, you got the ZVA approval last week, so we got, so what's your time?
ZVA approval for setback on the left side and the north side. So our, you know, our building footprint fits, um, that, that was kind of key to getting all the sites set is what's our building footprint gonna be, so we know. Our building footprint will fit with those experiences, so the site can move ahead like this from this point. This layout is probably ninety percent from layup standpoint, we've been engineering of, of stormwater and grading and getting all those things to.
Access point change. Yeah, if you could, any comment I have is some landscaping across the party joint north. Uh, maybe in that corner, uh, the bullet there, landscaping is a long jump pick, site distance.
Traffic.
So, yeah, we got along here, we got two issues, one is site distance and the other is county sewer basement. But we've got a little bit of room to work, um, as we get away from easement, there's some things that I could probably do, but yes, I, I, I'm looking at. Wanting to add something in there to, to.
Yeah, so now you have the truck loading docks on that side, it's sort of something that. Trucks sitting there waiting to be loaded.
You have a picture of what it's gonna look like?
Not yet. So the architect was really waiting to make sure we were getting set, they were too, too far because. You have them all to understand that my part of it takes a lot longer than their part. So we need to kind of get that set.
Will fight.
Yes.
Canada go fire, so this.
Canada go, no, because it's snatch, it will go once it's.
They will.
Yeah, you, we're, you're in the, uh, fly zone for the airport, so height is.
Height's an issue, yeah, but it's, it's out there away, so I think it's a seven to one from the end of the room, I think.
So.
I think you'd be well under the, what is the height? What is the height?
The, the match height in the zoning code, I believe is forty-eight feet, we're looking at trying to stay at forty-five. Uh, we already have received an F A A approval for fifty-five feet for construction. And let me step back to, there may be some of the roofs that may be sloped to help with installing those as they get into, I can remember some conversations from the architects.
Who's the architect?
Clint Batista with Enzo Perfects.
Did they work two shifts there or? They, they shift and I shift or?
I believe he's primarily one shift, I think, so it is fifteen employees, they're three employees. Depending on orders, sometimes they, they may. Work some night shifts, um, to, to get product done. He, he primarily does not make product and sort it, he makes product, he has orders coming. I don't know if anybody knows, but one of his biggest customers is Wicks.
Sure.
He makes a lot of product for Wicks.
He also, you told me they work Monday through Thursday or Tuesdays, they have a day off, I believe. They work longer shifts.
That one, I'm not sure, I can, I can verify. Good shifts, but, um, I do know that. His employees really enjoy working for him, he's very kind to some of the employees, treating them also. I, I, I know there's probably some of that that looks in there, there's, there's spots of.
Yeah, I've heard, you heard the discussion previously, the working.
Weekend work, um, so just to make sure if there's an overlap of shifts or something with them.
Right.
Or is it, then the, if it's based, it should be. So I, I, I do know that. Being very kind to some of his employees that a night shift is something he wouldn't want to do, so it's not something that he does regularly, because that's not something.
And deliveries of coming inbound and outbound are done during the day, yes, not at night, if hours?
That's correct, um, his expectations are right now that it's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of ten trucks.
And just to clarify, the additions on the building are to increase existing. Activities and work that they're doing in the building, it's not any additional new activities or new.
That's correct.
Setups or what have you.
That's correct, it's the, the same products.
Just more of it.
He's developing new meat-based products as he goes along, but it's the, the same business.
Right, okay.
I was talking to him one day and he says every week he has. A call from a large national customer of customized product or somebody who has a nice business.
Curious as to what percentage Whiteman's businesses. Outfits, I mean.
They don't, I don't know for sure, but I saw a lot of product with White.
Does he have open retail there for public?
No, he doesn't.
I'll get another quick. So it's not, you said visitor spots, it's just.
Who are the visitors?
Office visitors or vendors. Vendors or F A. He's gonna, he's gonna go through all the federal inspections. They show up and they want to show up, so he, he uses a few spaces for that. Um, three or four of us out, we had meetings on the project. So it's planned, part of them, um, as this expands, so. Not a lot of always.
There's, uh, no historical significance in the property.
Historical, I know they had that, the thing with the brakes, when they did the last edition, they hit the, uh. It was like the basement, yeah. I don't think it was considering. To be deserved.
It was a revelation, I remember. Construction stopped for a while until they figured out what it was and how significant it was.
I mean, judging by some of the pictures they see of them all up there, it looks like, at, at some point when this original building went in, it looks like they took a lot of that site out.
Yeah.
Probably so.
So, all right, board have any other suggestions? This is a sketch plan. Uh, anybody else, uh, how to groom or enhance the site prior to coming to work with it?
So lighting, we didn't have a lighting, you have more lighting in there, down lighting, anything?
Um, there, there's no, no more proposed lighting at this point, there is, there's not much lighting on the site now, it's this. I'll be able to talk to that a little bit further as we get through the design, uh, I'm expecting. To, to get this submitted for a single stage approval, the beginning of September of the Sunday October meeting. Gives me a little over a month to. Look through this and get it all ready. Um, if he's not running overnight shifts, I don't see a big need for one.
The loading docks.
Loading dock, sense of loading dock.
You know, materially, maybe you already referenced this, I only bring this up because the FedEx and Fire Department has. This sheen material and, uh, the loading dock area on there.
Oh, that hit the light hits it.
Because of the spacing, just is very, very, very great. Um, do you question the North Street intersection, just something considered when you guys look at that.
I'll, I'll.
The spacing and, um, how high it's needed, but I'm assuming we've got some of that.
Those are tangled up, so.
That's correct. So it's gonna be pull in, back in, and then they're gonna have to do a big, you know, here to get background, so this, this one's a tough one.
Yeah, that's it.
So there's a truck, each of these racks, you need to get around them, but it makes a small. One of those trucks needs a horizontal distance of about eighty feet to make a hundred meter return.
Well, yep, that's good.
That's, so that's a hundred meter return to that hundred meter return to get background on the mission.
And you said ten total a week?
That's what he's told me.
Right, so likelihood of all three being stacked there back to back is. Relatively low, but yes, yes, yeah.
That's right, that was ten inbound and down.
Yeah, it was on time total.
That was ten total, that's what he told. So yeah, we'll make sure that's all clarified when we come in for our, our. So we can talk to.
He's hoping to move and stuff out. Okay, um, appreciate you coming in, I'm sorry you had to waste a little bit. Get up at the podium, but that's okay, I'm usually there.
Alright, so my first, I mean, I'm last anyways too, so.
Okay, I'm used to it. I, I appreciate the most time, I appreciate you briefing us on it and we'll look forward to your application. Okay, thank you very much. And begin. Okay, um. Do I have any? Comments or, no, give me a motion on July twelve.
I moved stuff in the minutes of July twelve.
Maybe there were a couple, uh, one or two corrections to the initial draft, so, uh, we'd be looking at this.
It's the second draft, John, I think.
Yes, so, uh, grand motion, sorry Scott.
Yep.
All right, you got a motion, second all favor.
Hi.
And it's approved, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a release from, uh, Joanne Newbauer.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's. Looks like it's for thousands of feet dollars. After the first and final release for the version control, their motion. Motion.
Mark moves.
I second.
Okay, parts. Motion. Obvious. Okay, for the discussion, all favor.
Hi.
Post. Uh, referrals. The town board, uh, I know Scott and I sat in on the, uh, I'm worse discussion of the subdivision. Revisions and, uh, as we expected, got preferred.
It's definitely different.
Oh, no, no, it's not definite, it's just these. It was an issue of, does it, do the, the new regulations apply to existing. Driveways and he felt it was unfair to apply it, so I think the way it's gonna go is they will be grandfathered if the. The new regs will apply to new some.
Correct, that would be, could be.
If that's the way it comes today.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's just good, let's go back to ordinance committee and so, uh, while the ag overlay was approved. So, uh, that was discussed last meeting and next on to the board. And.
Uh, Bob, we'll be coming to the next ordinance meeting, talking about solar.
Yep, that's all the state.
Did Chris have any comments or?
Christian.
Yeah, no.
Chris Nadler, uh, he's seen it, but I haven't seen comments, he's coming to me as well. I need to remind her, but I invited.
What's the meeting, the next county meeting?
The next ordinance committee, obviously.
John, the chairman's gonna miss that, so I, I think it'll raise a show, repeat of, you know, what you've got, Scott and.
Yeah, I started a whole PowerPoint reading.
I met with, uh, on the aura of solar site today with AMP Energy, they're buying. Right, yeah, yeah, um, and they recommended we look at battery storage, they said, what are you doing? Yeah, they're hoping to start, uh, calling permits in the fall.
I know you.
I do know that, and we, I, yeah.
What should be alright.
Yeah, there's really.
We should, or was it, I mean, we just had the state approve a major, major solar installation, right?
Giant.
Giant, yeah. How many thousand acres?
Yes, I think it's at least about, uh, maybe more than that.
Massive. Yeah.
That was way over a goal from your state.
We're already over.
We're already over, but they extended that to another goal.
If somebody decides to do that here, we don't even get to see that.
You would absolutely have no.
No say, no say.
Yeah, they refer, they, well, they would, they would put a steering committee together and then they would, they would have input to the town board through. The seeker process, but really.
No input.
No.
You know, there's a huge.
Say more than thirty-eight.
It's not an acre.
No, it's not an acre, just, right, or megawatts, yeah.
Mega watch, twenty-five mega watch.
I thought I'd done, did you get that thirty-eight? I thought I did this calculation.
I might be wrong, I might be off by a true.
But we have with thirty, say you have thirty-eight or say you can't, was it a third? What is it new?
Right?
Yeah.
Once it's over twenty megawatts, it goes to different.
Twenty to twenty-five.
Right, there's a, there's a greater, yeah, twenty couldn't come to this if they wanted.
But most of them, they have said is that it's not worth it for them, so puts them in a different pool for the funding category. And so that twenty to twenty-five, it's only saying one that's twenty, that was down by the, the state park. And they were saying that the reason why they were applying for the, the municipal process was because one, it was a little bit easier to get through. And then two, that because they were in a smaller pool at that time of competitors who are all going out to get it, whereas if they went into the bigger one. They would have had to acquire more land and it would put them in a much stronger competition part, which delays the project, because that's why. It just seems like those are being staggered like a five-year window, one gets approved. It just seems like those are being staggered like a five year window, one gets approved five years from now, the other one will get approved five years and I don't, for whatever the reasons are.
I didn't get the answer back on recycling, but that was a big thing on hazardous waste on the panels, which is coming every thirty years or so is how the state.
Right now, the panel.
They're just saying they go to a recycler and the recycler responsible to do it, but there's a lot of chemicals that we don't want in the water.
Okay, here's with all those panels, where's what happens then?
So Bob will be the guest, the orange committee, roll the dates, uh tune in if you want to see it, nine o'clock in the morning. Okay, as far as our reports of, I know Scott and Bob have done submitted their paragraph to Shauna. For the annual report, um.
Yes, I have two, I need everyone wants this paragraph, please.
That's our timetable for.
Uh we wanna get a draft by August ninth, for the August ninth.
I didn't.
Scott, man, was very, wow, wow, very timely, Scott.
If they don't do it.
So Amanda.
Yes.
And Mark and. Although you have more, right?
Well, what?
Remind me.
I defer.
What's that? A paragraph about your project.
Yeah, that's. And I'm going away next week, so uh.
That was my fault.
No, that's all right, that's all right, uh.
You don't have to do that.
Well, we'll kick it around, we'll kick it around.
Wait, what?
The site is that criteria.
It's.
So, yes.
I cannot be.
Site design.
Criteria.
Yeah.
Um so yeah, the oldest thing for me, we'll kick it around and uh. Maybe talk about some goals for next year. Because that's part of the report too, so. Uh I guess Shauna talked about that, uh Scott, those uh town of Greece regulations, wow. I mean, that's sort of the way I was thinking, but boy, that was really over, I mean, it's. It's, I don't know, there's people elsewhere, but boy, and.
Well, I think you have to look at their their geography too, they're way more.
Yeah, yeah, and their density, they're more suburban, yeah.
Suburban and dense, suburban and dense, yeah, they have more neighborhoods.
But they had all those pictures of the different boxes, units, I don't know what they were showing us, other than these are types of boxes.
Types of, you know, that that would be allowed or considered.
The biggest thing I noticed is that they have the full requirement restriction.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And they ask if they were, they are.
And they issue permits and they get fee.
And they get the fee.
So it's a revenue producer.
That's right.
But that would, I think that would be polls would be the number one.
Flag.
Flag for our area, right?
All right, uh next meeting's the ninth, uh we've got Mr. Westbrook Corey coming.
The second meeting of August, is that a different?
It's on Wednesday, yes.
Thank you, I was twenty fourth, uh discussion.
It is, uh because of the primaries.
Primary elections, the other primary.
Ah, sorry, yeah, the.
Our second primary.
The other one for that.
Shauna will remind us when the meeting.
Sure, I will, I mean, generally.
I know, it's undiscussable, well, that's right, we get.
Like, don't remind you, because I remembered today.
I don't have, but I don't, I don't want to go into what's the agenda for that night, we did get through PRC.
We did, but we, it's kind of, we've, it's not finalized yet, so I'd rather not.
But right now for the ninth, we have Corey. And I guess we need.
I was sorry, did he receive an answer back on his?
Or.
Request, Corey, what?
Request for one.
Put in a. You're thinking of. You're thinking of Doug's request for interpretation.
This is a new application.
Oh, new, oh.
Someone. Someone.
Is everything put online, put the.
Yes, actually, we've uploaded a bunch of stuff in the. Fourth, is it the fourth, yeah.
So when we come out with, sorry, sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, for that meeting, I think we as a board, looking to staff, maybe as part of your ZLD.
Yeah, my ZLD is done, I can add, I can know.
As to how. How, how the plan relates to the private driveway issue and all that, so.
I think that is a my ZLD, but I will make sorts.
I don't want to sit here on the ninth and get into philosophical discussions, you know, private driveways and all, I guess, and it's either. So if you, you know, staff can give us the position.
Mark, you had a. Well, now indirectly related to that, because I I recognize that I raised points that are not always. In line, I I'm trying to get clarity on them, so I'm gonna try to do that with ZBA to understand what the heck they're, how they're making their decision. In other words, I it it feels to me like we're, we make rules that we want to selectively. Or for some reason enforced or not enforced, but we're relying on another entity to clear the way for us to do that. And we uh we asked ECB to do something that we then don't. It it feels like we're either ignoring a rule or not listening to certain people after we ask them to give us an opinion. But we're doing it selectively, that's my problem, but both of the plans, I had more of an environmental concern in the first project tonight than in the second one. But again, we're deviating from. With without clarity that we have resolved the or believe that the issue is not an issue. And I'll continue to do that, my intent is not sit here and be a pain in the ass, quite honestly, blunt. Does not the goal, it's trying to establish some informality and protect the assets of the community that I currently. So I will, I'll reach out, if there's somebody best to reach out with ZBA, I will take that action to try to.
You, we should talk, because again, this has been an internal discussion about that, have you ever seen?
Some of them.
The planning board look at something first, and then go to ZBA.
So, yeah, I know it's, it's an application.
Because they've shifted around.
Yeah, I know sometimes it's an app, the way the applications are received and which the order has to occur. But some communities have written in to their code that, you know, ZBA area variance applications, like you do with the county, get a recommendation. You defer to the planning board to get a recommendation, where we meet, this board meets twice a month. Should be relatively easy for them to provide an opportunity for you guys that first meeting in the month to review something that's going to be seen the following week at a ZBA meeting. In order to.
It happens, and so does point, the zoning board would would look at planning board recommendations in comments before they made.
Right, we do it opposite.
Right. I mean, even looking at method, we, you and I had that conversation about the other side of the creek. When they were doing, when they were rebuilding that one building, they're like, how the hell is that even possible? But it was approved, so we stamped that, that got stamped and approved, and then she, and she even said, she even said in her own notes, I'm a hypocrite, or I could be seen viewed as a hypocrite. So, because I started, when I first saw the name, I was like, oh, and then I read the justification and then I defer back to.
One of the ZBA members said she made a whole wrong.
Her?
That she hit every item, but.
She did.
He was the only one that that said, no.
And I also think that the zoning board could do a more thorough. Determination based on the five criteria. Line by line.
I don't need to take more time tonight, I'll have, I'll come down and have coffee.
And I, as I said, I think could use technical support, because they, they're they're flying blind when it comes to.
The only thing is, is even though you guys provided a recommendation, we may be coming full circle back to the same standpoint, which is now they're not considering ECB or the planning board. Decisions rendered and we're having the same conversation, but I think at least if there was an opportunity to do that, that's how I've seen it done before.
Is it first?
To get your, the planning boards get their opportunity to weigh in, at least provide some feedback prior to the ZBA taking action.
At least to write a narrative, planning board to meet first, then we write a narrative. Tell them what the zoning board, what we're thinking, what our board.
And now the ZBA asked.
Sometimes they will listen.
If the ZBA has to officially provide the referral to you, I don't know, that's a Chris Nada question, or can it be determined at PRC? This is an action item that the planning board should weigh in on before the ZBA takes action, then that gets deferred to you guys that way, that would probably be the way to do it.
Well, and maybe uh. Uh chairman of ZBA, I think he's been sitting in lately, right?
Chip, he has, he's incoming to PRC.
Uh. PRC, he can make a call, that I think the ZBA would appreciate the guidance or the recommendation from the client. And then.
He could do it that way.
Maybe that's.
Or even if they'd help, would need to just put in their own notes that says we, the the issues related to ECB have been addressed, to satisfy or or not, right?
Well, they should have, like you guys have findings, whether they're truly findings or not, the ZBA should have something very similar that they're providing, the documents, the reasoning for what they came up with.
I mean, for most of what we do, we have you. And when you can't answer it, then can we find someone else that can, so you're you're good enough at that.
Thanks. I'll take that, I'll take that.
They're still not taking your water flow calculations, I don't believe you are, but aside from that. At least we know somebody's looking at the interest of the of the rule, not even the interest of the community, they're looking at the interests of the rule. In many cases, so it's, uh I'll stop.
I think the ZBA did spend a lot of time talking, talked about it now, they they had a tough time coming to conclusions. On the on the mentee. And again, I think they were sort of floundering, and then they went back to their their way of determining the press, is there precedent and is there?
Oh, but there's no, the hell's the point of creating a new rule if we're gonna rule on precedent all the time, right?
Uh it's, it's been the SOP.
If if planning board got it first before it went to ZBA, would we just be doing? Like at the end of our meetings where we're looking at referrals or recommendations where we're. Kind of just talking about it and not really going through it, or would it be the full application up top with Lance's letter with X, Y, and Z?
So, a lot of times what the PRC is getting is a a a plan that doesn't meet the planning board's concerns, like. The application that we just solved, sketch plan, right?
Yeah.
That's how it was submitted, now we know it doesn't mean it, but they don't want to spend the engineering behind it until they know they got a variance.
Yeah.
So I would think that for those projects that require eventually a site and approval, that would make sense to have it come to you guys first for that. Sketch plan dialogue, at which point then you could provide feedback to the ZBA on your concerns.
Right.
And then it would, we would be, it would be talking to the applicant and saying, this is in your best interest, yes, to do this, to go through this process.
And then teeth, he could have said, hey, strain, you know, strained consideration.
Well, even like our second project tonight, I mean, RLD in the case that we're supposed to have elevations, the. The applicant said, yeah, I'm gonna do something close to what it originally was. I'm gonna do it close, I mean, I love his personality, I think he's perfectly, it's a taco, right?
Did we start?
Yeah. And I said it would be, been to our venture, we had an existing condition plan too, but, and I was gonna, you know, drill. He wasn't.
Okay.
Happy time.
Sorry, sorry.
Anyway, now I'm, we're just, I'll second. Wrap it up and go from there, uh I think we can uh call on Amanda for.
Real quick, how's their training, sign up for the.
Oh.
Training in New York.
We're signing everybody up at the same time, so if anybody wants to go to the training.
Oh, we're good to go, I mean, we're we're in, it's like a plan to take it.
Yeah, you're in. Yeah. Uh September twenty eighth.
Anytime, half or thirty.
Yeah, I'll send those out again.
Thank you.
It's at the New York Kitchen.
It's not all day, I think it's like nine to one or.
It's not.
Chuck, we can be there.
You can go over there on.
Taking the day off.
Uh the two uptown industries, they came off, the they just, they're gonna change the plan.
Uptown, the plans were not up to.
That was the. Motor shop.
Our standards, so that's why I chose meeting with our first floor.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, a couple did come off the office.
Yes, the two uptown.
Second.
Brickyard. Yes.
Okay, Amanda.
Yes.
Do your thing.
Uh I will make motion to adjourn at eight forty four PM this evening.
I will second that. One of us.
Favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Yeah.